The regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council is called to order on Monday, October 23rd, 2023 at 5:30 PM for closed session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Morse?
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Mayor Protem Coops?
Here.
Councilmember Denton?
Here.
Mayor Santinas?
Here. Item three, Mr. Stewart.
Recessing to closed session. We have one item, public employee appointment, and the title is city manager.
Are there any conflicts? Seeing none, and there's no one here in public, so we will recess to the closed session. Good evening, Bellflower. The regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council is called to order on Monday, October 23rd, 2023 at 7:02 PM. Back to open session. We are reconvening from the closed session, and there are no reportable actions taken during the closed session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Morse?
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Mayor Protem Coops?
Here.
Councilmember Denton?
Here.
Mayor Santinas?
Here. Tonight's invocation will be led by Councilmember Ray Denton, and then the pledge of allegiance will be led by Len Gurekka, our Assistant City Manager and Director of Public Works. Please rise.
Please bow your heads. O gracious God, thank you for all you do, and please bless our actions here tonight and assist us in building a strong and caring community. May you lend us your wisdom to find solutions in the issues that may come before us. Thank you for the opportunity to help others and the opportunity to try to improve the way of life. Ask for your protection and blessings on our military men and women, and may they always return safe to their families. Amen.
Amen.
Place your right hand over your heart, address the flag, and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ray, and thank you, Len. Let me start off with city council announcements for this evening. Earlier today, we hosted a special meeting regarding the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. The city is in the process of creating a Parks and Recreation Master Plan to provide a modern vision for the Parks and Recreation System in Bellflower. The plan will provide guidance for future improvements in the development of new parks, recreational facilities, and programs. The next workshop will be held at Sims Park Auditorium tomorrow, October 24th, at 6:30 PM, and is intended for seniors in the community. For more information, please visit www.bellflowerparksplan.com or call 562-804-1424, extension 2267. Mayor Protem Dan Coops.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Southeast Area Animal Control Authority, also known as SIACA, is hosting an ongoing pet adoption special, and that'll occur from October 7th through November the 4th, where all dogs, cats, and rabbits passed one day are available for $25. All dogs, cats, and rabbits past five days are available at no cost. For more information, call 562-803-3301 or visit siaca.org. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dan. Councilmember Wendy Morse?
Thank you. The Bellflower Chamber of Commerce is hosting its 15th Annual Trick or Treat on the Boulevard this Friday, October 27th, from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. There'll be carnival games, vendors, a costume contest, and more. The chamber also invites businesses, service clubs, and the community to join their next monthly morning mingle, which will take place Tuesday, October 31st, from 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM at the chamber office located at 16730 Bellflower Boulevard. For more information, please call the Bellflower Chamber of Commerce at 562-867-1744. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Wendy. Councilwoman Victor Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Bellflower. The city of Bellflower is hosting a photo contest, which will provide an opportunity for photographers of all skill levels to share their perspective of Bellflower, of the Bellflower community and culture. Amateur and professional photographers are encouraged to enter. The contest is open to the Bellflower residents only, and all photos must be of Bellflower locations within the city limits, taken between September or October 2023. The contest closes on November 1st, 2023, at 4:00 PM. For more information, please call 562-804-1424, extension 2103, or visit bellflower.org. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Victor. Councilmember Ray Denton?
Thank you, Mayor. Please join us Wednesday, November 8th this year, as we honor our military veterans with a ceremony and resource fair at the Bellflower Veterans Memorial. The memorial is located at 9918 Flower Street. That is where Civic Center Drive intersects Flower Street. The event will begin at 10:00 AM and conclude around noon. For more information, please call 562-804-1424, extension 2267. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ray. Tonight, we have two presentations. The first one is the Red Ribbon Proclamation. This week is Red Ribbon Week, and the second presentation is a check presentation from our favorite Assembly Member, Antonio Rendon. So we're gonna start with the Red Ribbon Week Proclamation first. So I'd like to invite the Southeast County Young Marines to join us at the presentation area. All right, for the second part of the presentation, our always... Sure, I'll give it to Gabby. I'd like to thank our favorite Assembly Member, and for me, it's always, he can be always the speaker for me. And he's a good friend. Assembly Member Antonio Vendor is a good friend of Bellflower, and tonight, he made a presentate, check presentation to the city of Bellflower to the tune of $2.7 million. And I'd like to invite Assembly Member Vendor to make comments about that, how the money's gonna be used for, and...
Sure, thank you very much, Mayor. Good to see everyone. Obviously, at the state level, it's been my pleasure to serve for almost 11 years now in state office, in the state legislature. The only regret I have is I've only represented Bellflower for this past year after redistricting, but it's been a tremendous year to have an opportunity to meet all of you. Tended the state of the city recently. We did a great community walk recently. It's a great community and really a good way to sort of end my career last year and this upcoming year in the legislature, representing the city. We have a check here for $2.7 million so the city can invest in a new microphone and sound system? Just kidding, just kidding. It's a check for $2.7 million for capital outlay for a senior and, senior and youth center that I know you're all talking about building over at Sims Park. Incredibly important when you think about a community, when you think about the communities that we all want to live in. It's communities that take care of its older folks, it's folks who have, who have really paved the way for all that our communities are, but also communities that take care of our younger, our younger generations as well. And this contribution on behalf of the state of California goes, is going towards those efforts. Last thing I want to say is I want to introduce Gabby Valosteros. To all of you who haven't met her, I spend way too much of my time in Sacramento and not enough time here in the district. Gabby is my eyes and ears for all of you here at Bellflower. If you have questions, concerns, you can't get ahold of me, feel free to reach out to Gabby, and she's always in constant communication with, with me and through my office. So again, thank you to the city of Bellflower. Thanks for your hospitality, and you're welcome to this check on behalf of the state of California. Thanks so much.
And I would like to say that... I would like to say to our, especially to our audience here, the chamber this evening and also those on TV land, our Assembly Member is very reachable. He's very down-to-earth, and I think he did one of the first things in, one of the first in Bellflower. Can you imagine an Assembly Speaker joining us in our community walk? That has never happened before. So, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Assembly Member, thank you so much again for being a friend of our city.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right, so how much of that will go to the Oak Center? 200, 2.6 million? And after we pay for the microphone? All right, item 10, public comments. Mr. Stewart?
Yeah, this is the time set aside for the public to address the city council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the city council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item. You'll be given three minutes to address the city council.
All right, if you'd like to speak up, speak about any non-agenda item, please come forward. Just sign in and state your name for the record.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Christina Frunau.
Good evening.
Good evening. So I am here on behalf of the general public who uses Thompson Park. I have been asked to present the petition that's been signed so far by 140 people, and some of our community members are here this evening as well in support of the petition. So some of the background is there's a notice posted at the entrance of the women's locker room at the pool in Thompson Park, and it's posted only in English, not in Spanish, by the way, that says, "Notice: This is a changing room where nudity may be encountered. This changing room may be used by people that may or may not be perceived as matching traditional gender designations." Parks and Recreation maintains that this notice has been posted since 2021. However, several people have stated that this notice has not been posted on the premises in a location where it could be readily visible to the public and has only just recently been noticed. Several women have encountered transgender people in the women's locker room, causing the women to feel very self-conscious and uncomfortable about using the facilities. Some women bring girls with them to the pool, and the issue of safety and comfort are compounded exponentially with the security of minors when that's at stake. It's understood that there are laws in place regarding the use of gendered facilities by people who identify as the gender opposite of traditional designations. The intent of this position is, of this petition is not to deprive one group of people the right to use a general, gender-neutral locker room. The purpose of this petition is to cause the city of Bellflower to put measures into place which will secure the safety and peace of mind of the vast majority of women who use the women's locker room and who rightly expect to be safe and secure in this space where nudity is encountered as a function of the space. The city of Bellflower has an obligation to secure the safety and security of all of its community members, not just a few. Therefore, the city of Bellflower is asked to designate a separate shower-changing area similar in concept to a family bathroom, where people who do not physically match a traditional gender designation may feel secure and safe while changing and showering. This same measure will allow the women and girls who use the women's locker room and shower facilities to have peace of mind, knowing that the women's locker room space will not be used by people who are equipped with male parts, which could conceivably threaten the physical safety or psychological peace of the women and girls in this space. Thank you for your consideration.
All right, thank you so much. Just for the record, we received a copy of the petition, right? And yeah, we will look into it, working with our city manager, our Parks and Rec Department, and our city attorney.
Hi, my name is Pamela Gray, and it's nice to be here. My name is Pamela Gray, and I've been a long-term resident of Bellflower for about 51 years. And I'm here with the petition that was signed. It's the concerned citizens of Bellflower and the surrounding community because it's, Thompson's Pool is a public facility. And I want to address the situation there, which I'm not even sure that you're even aware of what's going on. The sign on the wall that Christina quoted is not even clear or direct, and it's not posted low enough for a child to read. I had a question, I had to question the staff as to what it meant. I was told that a transgender person can be in transition with male genitals and use the women's open shower room and changing room if they feel that's where they should be. The petition was started to let you know that the policy is unacceptable, and the traditional men and women of the community are not happy with this. The public pool is used by children, seniors, disabled, fathers, mothers, grandparents who do not want to be exposed to persons with non-traditional gender designation, especially one who has not fully transformed their body to match a traditional appearance. This could be traumatic and cause psychological damage to the children and others using the public facility. I spoke to PJ Milano about this, and I was told that he understands the concerns, but he cannot do anything about the situation. It's a law. I asked him what the laws were he was referring to. He gave me five different websites. I read all of them, and the law applies to restaurants and spas. The pool and locker room and changing room are neither one. This is not, there is no reference to open shower areas. When I asked why the, why the shower area has no doors or curtains for privacy, PJ asked, I asked PJ, and he stated that it was decided to leave the area open to avoid an incident. I asked you, is this an incident of slip and fall, or is this a sexual attack incident? I asked PJ if a person of non-traditional gender designation can be checked to find out if they're on Megan's list as a sex offender. The answer, no, we cannot do that. Can I ask, can you ask the person if he's under doctor's care so that arousal does not occur as an issue that could be considered sexual harassment or unwanted exposure? Answer, no, we can't. As a solution to this situation, I suggest that the shower room have private locks and doors, and that there is a locked bathroom on the south side of the outdoor pool, which has outdoor showers and which could easily be turned into a non-traditional gender changing shower and room. Handouts regarding the changing and shower room situation should be given out to all who use the facility in English and Spanish. The handout should be written in very easy-to-understand language. Women, you, women may be showering with a male who is still equipped with male genitals. The sign on the door should have the women's traditional signage for a woman and a signage for a woman with male genitals.
Pam, thank you for your time.
Is that it?
Yeah, we'll look into it, okay? Thank you. Anyone else? Be careful.
Hi, my name is Shirley Myers, and I'm going to finish her little spiel. The Bellflower Parks and Recreation brochure has two aquatic pages. There is a dress code for swimwear. There is no mention of the changing room, and that one may encounter a non-traditional person in that room. All of this applies to the men's changing room only. They may encounter a non-traditional woman. The laws regarding the situation should be looked at very carefully. It may not apply to the pool, open showers, and changing room. This is not an issue of discrimination. It is privacy and protection for all. Thank you. We look forward to hearing from you.
Thanks, Shirley. This is a very complex issue, so we can just give an answer on the fly tonight. So we'll study it very closely, and we'll, we'll get back to you. So we'll study it very closely and we'll we'll get back to you. Okay, anyone else? All right, moving along. There are no public hearings tonight. There are no resolutions or ordinances for consideration. There's one consideration item, Mr. Stewart.
This is consideration of possible action and consider request from Greg James from MMA Architecture for a time extension and adopt resolution number 23 dash 43, a resolution approving an initial 90-day extension with an option to grant additional 90-day extension provided certain conditions are met for conditional use permit case number CU 21 dash 03 and development review case number DR dash 6 dash 21 dash 12 018 on properties located at 17617 through 17639 Bellflower Boulevard. This item is continued from the last meeting and I believe Ms. Concepcion has a staff report for the council.
Before we do that, a record deflect that reflects that there are three council members who had a conflict on this item. So we'll do the random drawing and find out who's going to participate in the discussion for this item. All right, Madam City Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, we are going to put the names in the clear bowl and draw a name of who will participate. Here is Councilmember Dutton.
Let me see.
I don't believe either.
And Mayor Potem Coops.
Yep, that's it.
And Councilmember Morse.
Spelled right.
Okay.
Uh oh. Morse.
Mayor Potem Coops will participate.
Oh, wow.
That means I leave the room.
Congratulations.
No, he gets to, he will participate.
You just won the lot.
Yes.
All right, Ms. Corpus or Ms. Ova or Ms. Concepcion? Okay, all right, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. The project was approved in September 26, 2022, at which time it was approved for a conditional use permit and development review. The CP was for approval for three restaurants with drive-through components, a fuel station and also the development on lots that would be less than 1.5 acres within the DFD area. The development review applied to the physical development of the site. Per the Bellflower Municipal Code, the approval is the construction has to commence within a year, which would be September 26, 2023. However, the BMC also authorized its planning agency to grant up to a one-year time extension for these approvals. A time extension request was received on September 8, 2023, requesting a one-year time extension. And the matter was initially scheduled for the September 25, 2023 city council meeting, which was then continued to October 9 and again continued to tonight's for tonight. As part of the city council's direction in the September 25 meeting, staff was directed to put together conditions of approval, which also includes requiring a hundred thousand or rather a condition of approval requiring a surety bond for the project. Staff is recommending an amount of $100,000 for that surety bond. Staff's recommendation for the time extension is to grant an initial 90-day extension, followed by another 90-day upon completion of a plan check submittal. That 90 days, I just want to note on there on the staff report and resolution, it was noted as December 26, when actually the 90-day falls on December 25, which is a holiday and the next business day would be December 27. So staff is recommending that it be a 92-day time extension so that we have, it falls on a business day rather than a holiday. Following are just photos of the site taken on September 22, 2023, another on October 9, 2023 and today. This kind of gives an idea of the existing condition of the site. This concludes staff's presentations unless there are any questions. And also I would like to note that the applicant and the property owner are here, available for any questions.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Can you show the first slide? Oh no, the second one, I think, the discussion, there you go, the conditions of approval requiring $100,000 in surety bond. So how will that work?
So the applicant would have to submit the surety bond and it has to be at the form approved by the city attorney.
So if they don't do the, so if they were given the extension, okay, and the plans are submitted within 92 days, then the surety bond goes to the city?
Correct.
Okay. Will that be extended until, because I think part of the second part of the recommendation is another 90 days for them to do the second half of the condition of the requirements?
Correct.
Will that carry over to that second milestone, so to speak?
So for the first 92 days, that would be their deadline to submit for a plan check. If they meet that deadline, then we are recommending another another 90-day extension for them to obtain the building permit to actually begin construction. If they fail to meet the first 92-day time extension, then we could essentially already access the surety bond.
Okay.
And if they do meet it and then followed by that, they are not able to meet the the second time extension, again, that's another opportunity or that would be another time that where we would be accessing that surety bond.
Okay, so it carries over to the second second milestone?
Correct.
Okay, all right, very good. And then in on this staff report also, just want to get some clarification here. In the additional time extension, the applicant will need to complete plan check, obtain permits and commence construction by March 26, 2024.
That is correct.
That's part two.
Correct.
Okay. So when they submit the the plans as of within 92 days, so what will they submit to the planning department at that point?
It would actually be a submittal through our building and safety division and it has to be a complete plan check submittal, which would mean all the required structural, geotechnical, grading, architectural and engineering would also calculations would also need to be submitted at that time.
Okay, so everything is going to be in that package within 92 days?
Correct.
Okay, very good. Thanks for the clarification. Any question of Ms. Concepcion?
I have a question.
Mayor Potem Coops?
To continue with the questioning that Mayor provided, so your 92 days and now everything has been submitted as promised. We don't trigger the $100,000 surety deal. Now the city's going to take some time to evaluate what's been submitted. How long will that take?
It depends whether the applicant chooses the traditional plan check submittal or they do the self-certification submittal.
All right, we'll need, we'll give him a chance.
Okay.
All right, so he can go either way. But if he goes self-certified, it's one set of numbers in terms of days and another one if the city does it, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, so now when the second, now you gave a date here of March 26. Say it takes at least two weeks for us to investigate what's submitted. Do we stop the clock or do is the 90 days going to begin right after that 92 deck, 92nd day?
It would be a total of 90 days. It does not stop the clock.
So even though we have not given him the approval because we've not approved what was submitted, that time is still going to come off the second 180, our second increment?
Correct.
Okay. All right, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Sanchez?
I would, that was an interesting question. I'm glad you asked that question because I didn't think about that. I would, I would say that if they met their first, I mean, let me take a step back. I think I want to, you know, crack the whip on this, obviously, but the surety bond, if they meet their first 90 days and they submit their plans and they get, you know, submit for a for a plan check, wouldn't it be fair for them too, though, if the clock stopped while staff are reviewing for the second phase?
The council could choose to do that. At this moment, staff's recommendation is just a continuing 90 days.
The only reason I say that is because it's no longer in their hands, right? It's on our hands. So as soon as we submit, give them approval, wouldn't we then start the clock on the second phase? I just, I'm just.
As currently structured, it's just a continuing 90 days, but if that is something that the council would like to explore, we can definitely change the resolution to indicate that, that if while in plan check process, then they could, then that time stops if that's what the council chooses to.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get to. I personally think that would be fair.
It's a simple thing.
That's just my, I'm just throwing it out there.
If he's going to self-certify.
Unless they self-certify, correct.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, that's mute point if it's self-certified. Yeah, okay. All right. No, I have no other questions at this point.
Okay, just kind of, I'm glad we're having this kind of discussion because how much would you turn off the clock? Because for example, let's say if you send the plan for correction, a second correction, a third correction, do we stop the clock? I mean, there's going to be some kind of for discussion.
The answer is simple, when they get the notice to proceed issued, then they, the clock would start again. So that way, if there's any plan check or anything that's holding it up, they're not penalized for it. The clock could start again on the notice to proceed.
Okay.
And it wouldn't restart. It would continue, so.
This is like a sports, sports game.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right, I guess we'll cross that bridge. Hopefully they will go for self-certification and he's a good point. All right, very good. So we're going to open for public comments and I'd like to invite the applicant first.
Hi, good evening. So I'm Jeff Gold on behalf of the property owner. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for considering our request. We got into a little bit of detail here about the specifics of staff's recommendation and just want, this time period isn't going to work for us and we really want to move forward with the project, but we are not at a stage, we are ready to, ready to have our architect start on all the plans. It's been, as everybody knows, the world has been very, very unusual over the last, over the last several years, including the last year with extreme inflation, high interest rates, which has thrown a wrench in virtually every development that's been happening in the United States. And our property is, our property is no exception. All four of our anticipated occupants of the project are still interested. They still like Bellflower. They still like the specific project. They like the design. They want to move in, but they're all going through changes in their organization. They have new budgetary requirements. One of our, one of our tenants is changing their business model from a direct operating their businesses to having a franchise and they're not prepared to move forward until we, until they identify a franchisee to take over the, take over the lease and move forward. So the, you know, in our request for the extension, we, we identified a timeline and in that timeline, we asked for a year extension. We can definitely, you know, work on a shorter timeframe than that. What we feel we need is roughly 90 days to finalize all of our business deals. And once we have those business deals finalized, then we'll start on preparing, preparing all the plans and that'll take us 90 days to submit the plans. So we're fine with the time period that you have here, except we would like to insert a 90-day period before that to secure our, to secure our business, business terms with our, with our occupants. It just, it's already, you know, as I said, when we got the project approved and we appreciate everybody's consideration when it was originally approved, it's not financially, it's not a project that a normal developer would proceed. The margins are very, very thin. We're able to finance it through, through, through non-conventional means, using other entities that we are within the same broader group of companies and the family companies. So we're able to finance it through the, through that method. But if we were, if we were to go out and get bank financing, there's no way that this would pencil, there's no way another developer could move forward with this. And we want, you know, we, we, we love the city of Bellflower. We think this will be a good project, a good addition, bringing at least, at least four new businesses and most likely eight new businesses to, to the city. We just need a little bit more time before we fully engage our architect and civil engineer and spending on that will be a couple hundred thousand dollars that we're going to be spending. And if the business terms change or the tenants change, it's going to be wasting time and money and nobody, nobody wants that. In terms of the request for the surety, we're, we're fine putting up the surety. I had a little different understanding of how that would work. My understanding is that if we don't hit our milestones, then we would be obligated to comply with the city requirements for, for the vacant properties, which I think includes a landscaping buffer and a couple of other things. And well, if we don't hit these time periods, then we will commit to immediately starting, we'll submit plans to get that, to do that within 30 days after these time periods. We can put a schedule together to hold our feet to the fire. And if we don't meet those, then that surety would be turned over to the city for the purposes of completing the work that we don't, that we don't complete if that happens. But, you know, we understand that that's something that, you know, if we get this extension and that's fully, you know, and we're not able to meet these timelines, then, then you've been very generous with us in the past in terms of allowing us to hold off on doing that work and we appreciate that. And if we don't have the project 100% lined up, which will be, you know, roughly April or so, if it's not 100% lined up by that, then we'll, we'll do the work and we'll have a, have a surety in place to, to back that up. So I know it's not what staff was, staff is recommending, but I think it's, you know, my opinion, it's a, we want something, we're okay having our feet held to the fire, but we want to commit to something that we feel is achievable. And I don't, we need that extra 90 days from now in order to get our business arrangements finalized.
All right, thanks for your comments. Let me just, I would like to go back briefly, September last year, when you and your architect made a presentation, I was jazzed with the presentation. I was so excited, but unfortunately that excitement turned into disappointment after a year later.
Yeah.
I'll just be blunt with you about that.
I, I am, I am as well and I appreciate your honesty.
My question to you is, explain to me more about the, the tenants, because back then you identified four tenants, three tenants.
Yes.
Poyo Campero, 7-Eleven and Sonic. Okay, so what has been done between then and now? Because you're asking for another 90 days to finalize the agreement. You had one year to basically seal the deal with them.
What's, what's, if the last year wasn't sufficient, what's different?
Didn't happen. How can I do this help?
So I'll say that one of the, in terms of the global economy, the economy is still in a, you know, inflationary environment with high interest rates, but there is more stability. A year ago and continuing for nine months, nine, nine of that 12 months, we continued to have regular increases in interest rates and inflation was not, inflation was nowhere under control. Now the Fed has eased off on increasing the interest rates because we've seen some moderation in the, in the inflation. So each of our tenants is now ready to, you know, they've updated their models based on what they perceive as the new reality, whereas six months ago, they didn't know what the new reality would be. And now, now business is, you know, it's still difficult to make deals, but at least businesses have a better idea of what the future is going to look like, what interest rates and what inflation is, is more likely to be in the future. A year, nine months ago, you know, nine months ago, six months ago, there was more uncertainty. Still doesn't look great, but there's, there's less uncertainty.
Are you looking at the same, the same tenants, the three anchor tenants?
We have, yeah, the three, those three anchor tenants are the same. They're all interested in moving forward. The four, uh, the fourth one, I'll mention who they are, is Coffee Bean and Tea Leaf. Who is interested, they're the one that is switching their model from a, a direct lease from their corporation to a franchise. And they're securing a franchise um, agreement, so they're, said they think it'll be soon. So we have a couple of other tenants that I've shared with um, Mr. Stewart. That have expressed interest for a similar amount of space, so um, we're gonna um. We have meetings set up to um, to work out deals either with that fourth tenant or those other two. And I think any, all three of those would be excellent tenants.
Okay, a, as you mentioned earlier, um, basically the, the city gave you a pass in terms of complying with our vacant ordinance?
Yes.
Uh. We, I've been getting a lot of complaints from our residents about that. And explaining that, well, development is coming, coming, coming. And month after month, I say, I was saying the same thing. And the question is, when is it gonna happen? So um. I'll be blunt with you, sir, okay? Would you develop the property?
You know, I believe we will. I cannot guaran, I cannot guarantee it, but I am willing to, willing to get the surety that shows that if we don't. If we aren't able to have this on track within roughly the six-month time period we talked about. Then we'll either do it, or you'll have the protection of the hundred thousand dollar surety to make sure that you can do it.
You have no intention of selling the property undeveloped?
We don't, we, we don't have that intention. If we don't get this, if we don't get this extension. Then we, you know, then we'll have to evaluate other options, but if we can get this extension, you have my word that our focus is gonna be on developing it.
Okay, that's it for now. Any question of Mr. Gold? Their pro temp groups?
Mr. Gold, I. While being on council. Meeting your parents was probably one of my highlights. And I've met a lot of people, but when they came to my store five, six, seven years ago. And your mom and your dad came in and introduced themselves, driving their little Prius. And uh, explained their situation and having bought the first car lot. And then they bought the second one, then they bought the restaurant between the two to put it all together. And they came to us almost every other week, met here in City Hall. Always brought a bunch of uh, dollar ninety-nine cent coupons. That we gave to our kids to stuff their backpacks with when school started. So many, you supported our schools and our children in a way you probably weren't even aware. But I counted a privilege to have known your parents. I mean, they were just stand-up people. And so I wanna give you that advantage of, of knowing that.
Well, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not as good as them.
No, but I, I appreciate where they came from and what they accomplished.
For them, and I appreciate your.
No, but they, they were the real deal. You know, it was like having Sam Walton in here and saying, you know, I started with. He told the story of the liquor store and putting everything up on the ninety-nine cent shelf, and he was fifty-one years old and got it all going. And had, I think he met with me, had sold three hundred and twenty stores. I mean, it was fantastic. I mean, what he was able to put together. But as mentioned by the mayor. Uh. That is a focal point of our city is the lots that your parents, and as we all know, the idea initially, before his untimely passing, was to put our Golden Corral there. Remember, let's go back way to square one.
Yeah.
And uh, I'll be honest with you, our city manager has gone out on a limb for you more than this council. Like for him to do. He put his neck, he's put his job on the line for you. That how, because he stood in the gap to try to keep this deal going. Most of us up here say, you know what? You've had an opportunity, let it go. Let them sell it, had them move back those fences, put in the landscape. But I guess the hardest part about this is that brought up by the mayor. I get, give it to you the fact that you have had a year to do something, and the market has changed. And you talked about uh, the financing of it all, but isn't it true that this, you don't need to go to an outside source for funding? You have your own capital to do this for, don't you?
We do, and that's where we can move it, it, within this particular.
Then why do you care about interest rates? That's your money anyway.
Well, it's relevant to the whole, well, one, it, when we're looking at the development, it's. Um, how we evaluate it to make sure that it makes sense. And it didn't make, you know, from a financial point of view.
It doesn't make sense, you sell it.
No, well, that's true. I mean, but.
And I know that property's gone up. I know what you paid for it. I know you can get your money back and, and probably double it.
So we would like, we would like to, we would like to develop.
We've heard you've even shopped it. Are we wrong in thinking that you shopped it to get rid of it? We have people that have told us that they.
No, it's absolutely not the case. We, I have had, um, some, the most that I did, somebody said, yeah, we're really interested. We wanna buy the property. Is it for sale? The answer was no. Can we send you a, a offer? I said, I'm not asking for it. They said, if I sent you one, would you look at it? I said, yeah, I'd look at your email.
Okay.
That's. Yes. Yeah.
The uh, the hard part about vacant property.
Absolutely not shopping.
Alright, but, and we want this project, and I'm smart enough to know that if we say to you. Uh, we're not gonna extend anything, and you're gonna say, well, I'll go to market with it. I don't think anybody else can build anything as good or as fast than what you can do already in the process. That's how I feel about it. But at the same time, I once had a good friend who was on the council here, who once said to me. Vacant land is like a mistress. They take all your money, and you've got nothing to show off. And that's kinda what you've got here. I mean, and there's three things you can do with that property. You can develop it, you can sell it. But can you at least maintain it? I mean, when you look at what the record, with all the, we finally, when your architect was here a couple of weeks ago, or maybe a month. And we explained to him our disappointment and how the property's being maintained. That's difficult too. Can't you at least maintain it? It's like you abandoned not only the property, but the city. So it's hard for us to feel all warm and fuzzy when you come in here and say, I need ninety days, because we've got, had a bad taste in our mouth for the last year. Mr. Dutton here, whose district that is, and whose shop is too close to talk boat about it. He harps to our poor city manager every week about that fence being on the sidewalk. I want it moved in, I want it moved in. And I want the landscape in there. I want the, the sprinklers put in. And city manager said, oh, the project's coming, the project's coming, the project's coming. Now finally, I think before, this project won't come till after Mr. Stewart retires. I know that. And uh, I just would like to know. Whether, when you will know whether or not you're gonna build this thing or not? Because. I'm willing to give you the extra ninety days if that will make it happen, because I don't think I can get anything done any quicker. And I would like to see that end of Bellflower, when that gets finished and developed. That whole area will finally get its, we've got empty buildings down there that are waiting for you to occupy, so more traffic is down there. Um, as indicated by the mayor, we're basically embarrassed by that property, because we've made, you've indicated you were gonna develop it. We've made the same kind of connotations to our public, and all we got is weeds five feet tall. So. That's my concern, is whether or not you can. You haven't shown us much so far. A lot of empty promises, and I'll be honest with you. And I'm not sure if your dad were standing there and your mother was standing there, that they would appreciate how this is going. Because they really were noble in how they finished everything they'd started. And I, I don't wanna scold you, but at the same time, I wanna explain to you our concern for the property. And how staff has been sideways with this council in your protection. And, and uh. We've run out of patience. Now, one of the things that hasn't been answered yet, and I think it needs to be, are you gonna self-certify? Are you gonna do it your traditional way?
So that's some, we'll have to discuss those alternatives, because I'm not familiar with the, the difference, so whatever makes sense.
Why don't you come forward?
Hi, I'm Greg James with MMA Architecture. Um, yeah, when we've done two projects through the city, we have one going through plan check right now that we've done the self-certification on. So we're comfortable with doing that. It would, it'll be up to, the final, the final decision would be up to the property owner.
It'll save you time and.
How does that affect our schedule? It usually shortens it. Yeah.
The cost is lower and the time is quicker, isn't it?
Yeah, it usually shortens, shortens the time by.
To submit?
Not to submit.
Because, because what we're committing to is when we're gonna submit, so that's.
Not for the submittal, for the plan check process. So the plan check process, and you guys could correct me if I'm wrong, if the city does the plan check process. Maybe fifteen, thirty days?
It's usually fourteen business days.
Fourteen business days? So we could probably do it, we could probably do it in seven business days, seven to ten.
In terms of the time to prepare the plans, how much time does that add to that?
It doesn't add anymore to prepare the plans, and it doesn't take away from the preparation time either. Yeah, yeah.
You're gonna give me a reasonable price on it.
Of course.
The Sonic uh, franchise, I think is probably one of the things that we get a lot of enthusiasm for. I was under the impression that they only deal with land or build on land they own. Is there a provision for you to spin off a part of that property for them to own it?
Yeah, that, that one, they would purchase their par, their parcel, and there's a. Um, CCNRs that would govern all the parcels, and I believe the city's been involved in the, in the preparation. There's some details to work out.
We haven't seen any final language on it yet, but we're pretty adamant about.
I think you've had drafts, so I think.
Do we have it, Pat? CCNRs on the uh, on the maintenance? I haven't seen that yet. We, we had a discussion about it. We came to sort of an agreement on that there would be a commonality, and that each would contribute toward the common maintenance of the property, because. My complaint to them at the time, they talked, individual maintenance means no maintenance. And we can't live with that, so we're gonna have to work out the covenants on that to make sure that works.
Yeah, so we, we would control the, we would control the maintenance, and we, if there are, you know, we would expect there to be two owners, just us and Sonic. But it was structured so that in theory, there could be up to, you know, a few, a few owners, and we would control it and build the tenants.
Sonic would own their parcel, with, how about the other three vendors? Are they gonna be renters of yours, leasingers? Okay. And that, there will be no other uh, building activity on the property except for the four retailers?
There's a, there's a pad five in the back.
Okay, tell us about that.
So that one, uh, that one, we are, um, we don't have tenants committed to that yet. So when we're, when it comes time to submit the plans, we will, we need to decide if we're submitting for it and building it on spec, or we'll do it as a separate phase.
Thought of a question. On the Sonic and the other three parcels in the front, I'm presuming you do the second phase and a second phase down the line, correct? Okay, so will, will the construction proceed on all four pads at the same time? And you do it, will there be individual construction on the Sonic site, and the other three would be built individually?
The way that, the way that it's structured now on pad one was gonna be a build-to-suit, where it, pads one and three were, excuse me, pads one. And four, we would be building the buildings for the tenants. On pad two, that would be Sonic, and they would be building, they're, we're gonna give them their pad, and they're gonna build their, uh, build their own building. Pad three for the Poyo Campero, we were gonna give them the pad, and they were gonna build their own building. And it would all happen at the same time.
Okay, that's it. So you're gonna do all the grading and the, and the pouring of the pads and everything?
We, we would be respons, for all of them, we would be responsible for the grading.
Alright.
Just a follow-up. Who's gonna be submitting the plans for pad, pads two and three?
So we're gonna do, we're doing all the.
So the, so the grading plans for all pads would be submitted by the civil engineer hired by Mr. Gold. The architectural drawings for pads two and pad three would be submitted by the tenants' architects.
Okay, so.
We would do pad one.
And four.
And pad four.
We don't know if they're gonna self-certify or they're gonna not wanna self-certify, correct?
That's correct.
So you can only commit to the two pads that you're doing. The other two are still up in the air.
But I.
That's problematic.
I would say that Sonic is pretty biting at, they're, seem like they really wanna go, I mean.
No, they've sent us all letters. We're getting letters from Sonic.
I was saying, they're always asking me, when can we go, when can we go, so I would.
Were you doing the architecture for pad three or no?
For pad three? No, no, at least not yet.
Or maybe they were using the same civil?
They're using the same civil.
And, and you're responsible for all the landscaping on the site over and above the pads, so they're, the individuals are not doing their own landscaping. It's one landscaping plan, you do it all. Signage is the same thing.
We're doing all of the, we're doing all the perimeter landscaping. Was there some portion in the scope that was?
I mean, on the design portion, on the entitlements, it was all.
A patio for the Poyo Campero, they were doing themselves.
And signage, you would submit all, a singular signage plan for the entire site as well? And they all agree to that? They already know this, correct? Okay.
Yeah, there's a master sign program that was approved.
So the, the other property at the top of the picture there, that one there. That would be developed as retail as well? But, and how far beyond, you're gonna do the front. Right away, within a year, and the other, is that someday? A year, two? What do you think?
I would, I would prefer to do it all at once. Where, you know, once we have our, you know, all these other ones finalized, and we can give site plans to other prospective tenants that show exactly what, you know. Instead of having confidential names on there, we fill in the names, and they can commit to them that we have signage. I believe we'll, our goal is to get those leases signed quickly, at least for a couple of the units, so that we can build it at the same time. It's much more efficient.
Oh, I would think so.
But in terms of a commitment, I would say we're, you know, I'd say within, um, within a year after we complete the first one. Um, would be the outside gate.
What are the odds you're gonna reverse field and move, say, we've had this discussion that perhaps there might be, I know there's residential uh, developers that are looking to do some housing there. On that back site. I know you've talked to them as well. Is there a chance you would abandon plans to do the retail there and look for a residential project on the back part of that phase two of the property?
You know, I'd say, sure, there's a chance for that. I don't think it's likely, but there's a chance. I mean, we have been approached, but that, I mean, we prefer to do it as a retail. As an all-retail development, makes more sense. It's not that big, it's not really a big enough scale for the. Um, for residential developers. It creates some issues about how do we, you know, separate it with what kind of wall do we put in between and. Thing, landscaping and all those types of things. I prefer to do it all retail.
I would think that if you got such strong retailers in the front there, you wouldn't have much problem leasing, because there's gonna be a lot of traffic on that lot.
That's, that's my expectation.
One of the meetings I remember you and I attended, and you brought in an associate that insisted it be a car wash. Is that guy still with you?
No, he's not.
Alright, I don't wanna see a car wash there.
What's that?
No, I wanted to know whether or not that car wash is gonna resurface again.
I don't think, I don't think they're gonna have space for the car wash.
No, we, yeah, no plans for the car wash.
Based on everything that was just discussed, what is your drop dead timing now that you think you need?
So I think ninety days to secure, um, ninety days to secure the, to secure the deals. With, get the contracts, and then ninety days to um, to prepare and submit the certified plans.
So why will it take ninety days to secure the, the agreements, since they're on Bordo Valley?
If you wanna come help, I bet we could do it quicker, but.
I, I volunteer our city attorney.
It's like.
So ninety and ninety, how does that differ from what uh?
Well, they went.
They want the extra ninety.
You want the extra ninety.
The ninety is to secure the deals, then ninety more to do the plans.
And then ninety, so you're looking at.
Two seventy.
Our first ninety, Jeff, is his second ninety.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes.
Okay, um, so, question about.
Hold on a second, Carl has an idea, okay?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I. My suggestion is simply to extend this by six months. If at six months, there's no deal, you simply expire the, the land use approvals. Uh, with regard to the maintenance of the yard, uh, we need the hundred thousand dollar surety. I don't care if it's cash, escrow account, letter of credit. Bond, whatever it might be, uh, we have a. To the Mayor Bo Tem's point, we have a problem with that, and I don't wanna use code enforcement in order to go out there and start whacking weeds. So I'd prefer that it be voluntary, but in the absence of it being voluntary, I wouldn't have a pot of money to go against in the event that the city has to do it. Um, on your behalf.
During, during the first six months?
Correct.
And that's, and that's totally fine. I would like, you know, a, a little bit of notice, but um, you know, obviously, we don't.
Well, we'd have to get a warrant, so that your warrant is your notice. I'm guessing that the city manager, well, whomever is sitting in this chair will give you more notice than, than me. But if, if that's something that's acceptable, then my suggestion is simply to put insult or insert into this draft resolution, rather than a one-year extension, a six-month extension. And authorize me to enter into a consent order with Mr. Gold or his representative, uh, along the lines that we outlined, which is.
So what's, what needs to be, can you clarify, what needs to be accomplished within ninety, within the first, within sixty day, within six, six months?
He needs to start, we, we need to issue building permits for his project. And he has to comply with the other things I was talking about, which is the surety, whatever form that surety is in, so.
So basically, we're pushing it back ninety days extra?
We're pushing it back six months, because what I'm hearing is, it's gonna be ninety days, and then we're gonna be in here again, talking about another ninety-day extension, and rather go through that process. Why don't you just give him six months to finish up the problem? We'll have the surety in place that, that we need to make sure that we have the property maintenance costs associated with the maintenance that's necessary for the property. Uh, and assuming that it's all done voluntarily, then, then the surety is released and it goes back to Mr. Gold. Uh, but the real leverage here right now. But the real leverage here right now that we're talking about tonight is the extension on the already expired approvals. So those expired on September 26th, right?
So let me clarify again, on within six months, he needs to submit the plans.
Well, he needs to get a building permit.
Yes.
So plans have to be completed and we have to issue a building permit and construction needs to commence. That's my suggestion.
Okay, so so in effect, you're accelerating the the plan check, all these things in a way by giving him 90 days upfront.
Yes.
But he needs 270. How is six months going to make it work?
No, he needs six months. He needs 90 days to to seal the deal with his tenants, right?
Right.
That's what you was asking.
And needs another 99 days to do the plans.
To do the plans. We're combining those two.
It's 180 days.
180 days.
180 days.
That's six months.
To seal all the deals with the tenants, submit all the plans, do the plan check, whatever it is, everything is, all the gradings, everything is done. We're ready for construction at the end of six months.
Yeah, construction doesn't have to be completed, but we have to issue the building permits in order to go forward. Within that six month period.
Now, Mr. Mayor, if I may jump in here.
Uh, Councilmember Sanchez.
I haven't had a chance to scold Mr. Gold yet, but I'd like to get to that at a certain point.
Now's your chance.
But before we do that, I don't want to jump conversation here. Carl, on that, on that proposal, would you say that the surety bond is only accessed if he doesn't pull permits or if there's maintenance issues?
It's the maintenance issues. Remember, there are two issues really before the city council right now. One's the public nuisance issue, which is that the property's out of compliance with the vacant lot ordinance. Two is the expired approvals that were provided. So the surety really goes to making sure that the city doesn't have to lien the property in order to recover the costs. We have the costs upfront. If we have to go in and abate the property and put in all the landscaping and what have you.
Right. For for that's for a vacant ordinance.
Correct.
Okay. So you're talking about for deploying that whole.
Right. The surety has nothing to do really with with issuing building permits or anything like that. The surety is there in place to make sure that we have money to access in the event that we have to use city forces to go after and vacate or cut down the weeds and put in the fence and put in the landscaping, what have you. And I think Mr. Gurecki's guesstimate, educated guesstimate on that is about $100,000.
And on the notion that, let's say, he doesn't do the project, let's say this thing falls apart, falls out, they don't do it. Then we access the surety to enforce the vacant ordinance?
If it's not maintained.
No, no.
Or we don't do it.
Or if they don't do, at that point in time, they need to comply with our vacant ordinance.
Right. Well, they're supposed to be complying with with just the maintenance right now, but at the time, if we don't issue building permits within that six month time period and Mr. Gold doesn't voluntarily install the things that are required to be installed voluntarily, we will have access to that surety to to make, to pay for the costs associated with it.
And those things installed are enforcing our vacant ordinance also. Very good. Okay, thank you for that clarity. Now, Mike.
Before you scold him, about, let me just kind of follow through on your question for clarification. So during the, during that six months, all he needs to do is maintain the property by cutting off the weeds, making sure that fences are still standing.
Correct.
He's not required to put new landscaping nor put new fencing.
Correct. We will, we will suspend enforcement efforts along those lines as long as we have the surety in place, which will ensure that at the end of the time period, we have something to go against if we need to. And as a reminder, it's going to be way more expensive for the city to do it because we have to pay prevailing wage on everything. So that already tax on another 35% on everything in any event.
All right. For your scolding of.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Gold, please.
You know, you've had, you know, they've told you exactly what what we all think. And I think you got lucky with, no offense, with Mayor Protem Koops winning the drawing, not Councilmember Dunton. Because I think he would have unleashed a whole different level of havoc.
I tried to temper it a little.
Yeah. Look, just from hearing you guys' conversations, just from hearing the answers and just your engagement with your architect, I believe he's your architect. For me personally, I'm going to be honest with you, it feels like the project was shelved for a whole year. I it just, the you person who came a year ago in September of 2022 and presented this project, that was a whole nother level. Today, all I'm seeing is just like this project's just been on the shelf and there's been no work done on it whatsoever. That, to me, is concerning. I, like Councilmember or Mayor Protem Koops, understand the importance of trying to work something out here. Bottom line is, we don't want to see a vacant property like that. I'm honest with you, being honest with you, I'm anti vacant properties. If it were up to me and if I had my way, I'd pass a tax in this November election and I'd tax every single vacant property by the square footage for 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 properties that have been vacant for over five years or so. I'd do something like that personally, just because I think it's an opportunity cost for the community. I I was excited, dazzled by your project. Everyone speaks very highly of you. I think, you know, they've mentioned it, you know, staff have gone to bat for you many times, stuck their necks out for you. I want to believe in this. But I but I think the the fact of the matter is, all these maintenance issues, they they need to stop. Just please, at least give us that courtesy. You know, for the people that live in that community as well and for us. I too am embarrassed by it. We presented it, our mayor at the time presented it at State of the City last year. And it's come up, it's been a topic of conversation, when is that happening? It's like they think that we're lying and we're, you know, we're bringing up projects that aren't true and that aren't happening. So that that's, I just want you to know that a little bit. They've said theirs, I've said my piece with it. Personally, I I don't feel that the 100,000 is enough on the surety. I'll just throw that out there. I think that it should be higher. I don't think, I think we've done other projects where we've done the work and there've been smaller properties and there were less than, and there were, what's the word? I don't think this is going to be enough to cover this property. Just, I'll throw that out there. I know staff have done their homework, but if, I would ask them to double, triple check their numbers because I don't think 100 is enough on the surety, just personally. And I'll conclude with that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Sanchez, any overage will simply lien the property as an abatement lien. So there, it's not like if we exhaust the the surety that the city is out of options.
And that's why I'm glad we have a city attorney. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Going back to the negotiation with your tenants, I'm still not sure what happened the past year. Were they having some kind of cold feet or something else?
You know, it's hard to, it's hard to unpack the past, the past year. There was a succession of issues between the real estate broker changing and the representative within the company and a change of the business model. And I sure could have handled it better. And, you know, I take I take ownership of that, of not pushing it all on them. I could have handled it better. I would, you know, I appreciate the efforts to give, to consider giving us an extra number of months to see if we can make it happen. And I and I will be fully engaged to to do my best to make it happen. I hope, I hope, I hope that it will and I know my words won't, at this point, don't, don't have a lot of value. I hope that next time we, next time we talk, I'll have the actions to to back up the words and I appreciate you considering giving us the the time to 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 show we can do it.
Okay, so just one more point of clarification. So the architectural work will not be done until you sign an agreement with them? Is that, is that a fact?
Until we're, I mean, if we're, if we're just about to the finish line, sure, we can go ahead and start with the architect. But we need to make sure that the deals are on, the deals are on track. And at this point, there's, there's questions on each of them and I'll, you know, have a better idea as we as we progress. And I'm happy to stay in contact with someone at the city to update on our progress as well. It's, you know, we don't need to wait six months and then to find out, oops, I'm happy to, I'm happy to give periodic updates.
Okay, so what's going to happen, let's say, if you're going to get a tenant for pad one within, let's say, 90 to 120 days? What's going to happen? There's no tenant for pad one. You have secured tenants for pad two, three and four.
If it was, if pad one was the only one that's open, we would go ahead. That's, it's on the hard, hard corner. If we had it for the other, I would have no problem going ahead, knowing that we'll, we'll make a deal for pad one. That's the most, that pads one and four are the most desirable. I, that I would take that risk.
So you'll build a shell for number one?
I, or I might, might go ahead and build the building.
Okay, you will. Okay.
Or at least start on the, you know, at least start, at least, you know, submit, submit the plans, go through, submit the plans, get the, get the permit. Continue to aggressively work with other tenants. If we have a new tenant that needs to move a door over, then we'll try to get the submittal adjusted. But it's in everybody's interest to move forward. So if I'm willing to take the, you know, at that point, I would be willing to take the business risk to to submit the full plans, get the permit and start and prepare to build the building.
All right. Anything, any other question? Councilmember, Mayor Protem Koops?
If I were you, I'd engage a gardener of some sort that goes over there every other week or every month.
Yep.
And just does it. And you won't have to come to Balfour and inspect it. You just say, mow it.
Yep.
And you're cool. So what was suggested by the city attorney was a six month proposition. Does that have any appeal to you?
That's, yeah, what was proposed is acceptable. That will, I believe that that gives us sufficient time to to make a real effort and I think there's a very good chance of it coming together.
You can see my reasoning. If we didn't allow you to give you another chance, you know, to try to make this right, because this could be a great project. And we're, and like the city manager says, we always forget all the fall derelict that goes on before you get a project. You always remember the finished item. You know, we had a wall over here at the fire museum and it was like $65,000 to stucco it. And he says, you know what? That wall needs, it's hard $65,000, but we're, we're going to forget about the price after we've got that wall looking good. And that's kind of how it goes. And likewise, I'm willing to work with you to try to get what I deem to be, and if you didn't have such bona fide tenants lined up. I mean, the, we met with the guy from Sonic and he says he's going to do a full on drive through with girls on roller skates. I mean, that's what he proposed to us. Again, that was a year and a half ago. We'll see how things have changed. But, I mean, he's anxious to do a project that Balfour is looking forward to having. But I'm willing to give you the benefit of the doubt in memory of your parents. And and if I can, and I would like to, I I'm even feel as generous after I scolded you to take up what was written or said by a council member of Victor Sanchez is that we have to recognize that it may take a couple of weeks to get out of plan check. You know, I don't want to penalize you out of that six months if we're in process with his paperwork. So six months is fine, but let's build in there some give and take on submittal because that doesn't always go as fast as we hope.
Well, but that's going to be, that's going to be a moot point because instead of 90 days, we'll give him six months.
All right. If you get, if six months covers all that possibility.
In addition, Mayor Protem, he's doing, they're doing self certified.
All right, so that's off the table.
Yeah.
And I'm, if he's willing to hire a local landscape guy to go in there and whack those weeds down every other week, the $100,000 is fine with me as a, as what was said by the city attorney. If it, if it would get to that point, which I doubt will occur, we can still lien the property and get our balance. So it's not like we're going to lose money. We just want to break even on the deal. And I want to give him a little credit too. Remember when they bought the car dealerships and we demanded they tear them down? Because we had some homeless move in. I think somebody died in there and with a little coaching, you took care of that for us. So I want to give you, I don't really want to scold you, but I will give you some kudos for taking care of the property, several years ago, but don't forget about us, is what I'm trying to say. Keep it on the radar and you won't have Jeff to defend you anymore. What did Nixon say? You won't have Richard to kick around anymore. So. But that's how I will, and we'll see what my colleagues do. Okay?
I appreciate that and no prob, we'll get a gardener to do regular maintenance.
Right, and then you're off the hook.
Local Balfour gardener to do regular maintenance.
Just so they come on a regular basis and you don't have to give up your 100 grand.
And then just to clarify, we would like the six months to be from today and not, you know, back to September.
Right, we're going to start a whole new process. We're going to act kind of like you just walked in the front door and you've got an idea and you want to implement it.
Okay.
So there's my spiel. What do you guys think?
We're just talking, it seems like we have some kind of a, an agreement here. Councilmember Sanchez, are you on board with the six months? So I was confirming with the city attorney how to reward the resolution. So we'll just make it very simple, a resolution approving a 180 day extension. And then blah, without the additional 90 days.
Right, and Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Make it simple.
We'll make it simple. It's 180 day extension.
Today.
Starting today.
Okay.
Retro, well.
Starting tomorrow.
It's starting tomorrow. Correct.
Plus six months from today, retroactive from September 26th. So that would bring you to April 26th, 2024, that they would need to obtain permits.
Retroactive to six months from today.
Legally speaking.
Plus certain days from the expired.
Right.
Okay.
So, but we understand what the council is intending. The resolution will be 180 days from the date of the resolution. The time period between September 26th, when the approval's expired until today, is simply suspended. So it's 180 days out from today's date.
Okay. You'll verify that later on. I mean.
Yeah.
But it's 180 days, Mr. Gold, 180 days from today?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to give you a pass from the past expired CUP.
Right. And then, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just for your edification, I have separate authority under the municipal code to enter into enforcement agreements. So I don't, you don't have to do anything with the resolution with regard to that. I have direction from the city council with regard to that and I'll interact with Mr. Gold and his team with regard to to drafting something.
Okay, and all the conditions are okay with you? The surety, everything else?
Yes, with understanding that we have a chance to do it ourselves first, you know, we're not just forfeiting.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, actually, we'd prefer if you did it that way.
It's more expensive if you do it. Yes. All right, we're clear?
I understand. I think you got a motion.
Are you making a motion? Okay.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Mayor.
I'll support the motion.
Motion by Councilmember Sanchez, seconded by Mayor Protem Koops to approve resolution 40, 2343 as amended. Okay, we're clear? All right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Koops?
Aye.
Mayor Sanzaines?
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Want them to go get the colleagues?
Oh, yeah, okay, please. No, Ray and. It's in the public hearing. Let the record reflect that Councilmembers Dunton and Morse rejoined the meeting. We're now moving on to the consent calendar. Does anyone have any conflicts? No conflicts? Wow. Does anyone want to pull an item?
Move the consent calendar.
Oh, hold on. No, no, hold on, hold on.
Well, you didn't do anything.
I want, while I'm waiting for you guys, I'm waiting.
Get off the clutch.
I want to pull item 14E and 14F. All right, let me start with 14E. There was a correction here. Just point of clarification in terms of the scope of this ad hoc committee. So what will be the scope of this subcommittee?
What, I'm sorry, ask again, the, what was, what was the question?
The scope, the scope of the ad hoc.
What are we going to do?
The public, public, the ad hoc public safety committee.
Yeah. I think it's pretty overwhelming.
I know. Well, well, I just want to kind of base on our discussion with Councilmember Sanchez, because he and I are the ones who requested for this ad hoc committee. We thought that the idea is to address the issue of response time for public safety.
Correct. So there's.
I want to address that instead of a broad public safety issue. I want to address that instead of a broad public safety issue.
Yes, exactly right. You're limited, what we're talking about now is the ways to address the response time on this, but frankly, I could see this growing into something bigger, is the reason I said it that way, so.
Right, and if it does, then I think we need to kind of pull it back.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are we in agreement with that, Mayor Protem Coops?
Totally.
Okay, all right, very good. All right, and then...
Do you guys want some ideas?
Submitted in writing.
See, this is my concern, so.
We got a meeting up.
We have a limited scope to talk about the response times and ways to address that now, but we have a much broader issue discussed regarding public safety going forward, which I'm gonna have to come back to you guys on before we get out of here.
Right, exactly.
Right, and Mr. Mayor, if I may, maybe after this is approved, and maybe Mayor Protem and myself, we can meet and have a better discussion, and then we can kind of bring back what the focus point would be.
Right, exactly. Because I want to bring back the other council members in terms of discussing the broader public safety issue.
Maybe like a study session.
Right, something like that.
Well, more than that, I mean, I think the subject's gonna get bigger in a hurry after you get through this Level One, but I think that's, we'll start this discussion, bring it back to council.
So again, I just want to clarify that, this is gonna be a focused discussion on response time. All right, and then Item fourteen F is the, this is, this Item fourteen F is about the consideration of possible action to consider modification application for one existing cannabis business permit for dispensary use of NC three systems, Inc., DBA, Deli by Caliva at ninety-five thirty-five Artisia Boulevard. Okay, is the applicant here?
I'm here.
Okay, you can just sign in?
Yes.
Ma'am, and... All right, so explain to us the request for this modification.
So I'm Mindy Bascha, I'm actually the Vice President for Stores for all of Goldflora, who also represents CMG. The modification that's requested has to do with the merger that had just happened in July. So the ownership of CMG has not changed, it's under the same ownership, which is under the parent company or TP Co. holding. What has changed is the upper entities. So the parent entities have merged into one, but the ownership has stayed the same. So the parent company or TP Co. holding still owns CMG. CMG still owns Deli by Caliva, which is NC three doing business as Deli by Caliva.
Okay. Let me go back to twenty-twenty-one.
Okay.
This Caliva Officer Certificate, when there was a merger back then. So, the business entity is Caliva, it's owned by NC three.
Correct.
Correct, so technically speaking, NC three is the permitee.
Correct.
Right. And back then, my understanding was, in twenty-twenty-one, the owner became CMG Inc., because there was a merger between a few entities, which our city attorney confirmed. So, refresh my memory, just for the sake of discussion, who owns CMG? I don't need specific owners, say, twenty percent, fifty percent is owned by public entity, by this, that. Just give us a broad stroke, so to speak, of who owns CMG, because CMG owns NC three, right?
Correct.
Okay.
They do. I will have to get that information directly for you. I don't know, can I call a lifeline, is that okay? To get you who exactly owns CMG?
Okay.
Is that fine?
How long will it take?
A few seconds.
Okay. Okay, bring it back? Okay, 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 so the next question is, okay, let's bring it back. The next question, I'd like to know also, because this time you're coming up with another merger, right?
Correct.
merger with Golden, Golden?
Goldflora.
Goldflora.
Mm-hmm.
So who owns Goldflora?
Goldflora.
Before the merger, who owns Goldflora?
So Goldflora was investment between GF Embesco, and there's three of those entities, along with Goldflora LLC. So they owned...
There are four owners?
They're part of a entity within Goldflora. So Goldflora had dispensary locations, part of that was distribution centers as well. So they did business as stately distribution, along with three other investment companies at the time. My understanding. We merged, so I was part of the TP Co. Holding Corporation. We merged, and so TP Co. Holding Corp. basically sold into Goldflora Corp. So the ownership is still under TP Co. US Holding, which owns CMG, which owns NC three, doing business as Caliva, Deli by Caliva.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney?
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I do have literally a corporate structure sheet, if that's something that you would like to see up on the screen. But TP Co. Holding Corp. is out of British Columbia, it has a US holding company. And I believe what the speaker's talking about is the merger that occurred last year, but there's a whole branching of other entities under that umbrella, one of which is CMG Partners Inc., which is a Delaware company. And under CMG Partners Inc. is where Caliva and NC three systems is located. So, if you want to know the corporate officers, I have those corporate officer names for CMG.
Yeah, I just want to know the ownership, can we show that chart? I think I've seen that, it's like an organizational chart.
Do you have it, Travis, or I have it here, if you can plug me in?
I think for the benefit of the whole council.
We just have an HDMI cable, I can plug it in. Randy would have it now.
Whoa.
Just to fill in the silence. So for CMG Partners, Steve Allen is the Chief Executive Officer, according to the documents. I have E, and then Robert Elglor is one of the directors, as is Juan Churchill, George McQuilkin.
But I'm not too concerned about the officers, because they're not owners, right? The officers are not owners?
No.
Okay.
So here's, here's the structure that I was mentioning.
All right, so my focus here is, CMG now owns these different companies, one of which is the NC three company, which is technically the official permitee for Caliva.
Correct.
Okay, all right, so my question is, this was a merger before, right?
Correct.
With about four or five entities, way back in twenty-twenty-one?
Yes.
Okay, so now, TP Co. now owns CMG Partners?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
So who are the owners of this prior to merging with CMG?
Great question. Let me text a lifeline?
Oh, you want to bring it back? Here's my question.
Let's bring it back, okay.
So when you come back here, what I want to know is, who are the owners of TP Co. prior to the merger? Okay, because we know the owners of this company. That was verified by our city attorney way back in the last time the laws go around, so we know. So I want to know, before the merger, who owns this? Okay, and then the next merger is Golden, Goldflora. Who owns this prior to the merger with this? Because it's very complicated, I drew a flow chart at home, oh, active when I was in Mexico, to understand this, so that we can confirm that there was no change in ownership. That's my, I'm not trying to trick you here.
No, I understand.
I want to be honest here, so I want to know who are the owners of this company? Who are the owners prior to the merger? And that's the only way we can verify that there was no change in the ownership, if we can compare the two.
And just for clarification for the representative, when you're talking about ownership, you're talking about for purposes of this permit.
Right.
Not shareholders that own whatever percentage.
Not the others, just what is...
Refer to the memo that's attached to the staff report for this particular item, which has the definition of ownership in it, that's what the mayor's referring to.
So we don't care who owns this company here, we don't care about this? Okay?
Understood.
We only care about the permitee and up.
Okay.
Because when there's merger, usually there's a change in ownership. Either one acquires another company, or they merge two companies to become a new company. That's the merger.
Okay, understood. Okay.
Okay?
November thirteenth, is that what I heard?
Hmm.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll pull Item thirteen F from, fourteen F from the consent. And, you have a motion?
Thank you.
I have a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mayor Protem Coops, seconded by Councilmember Sanchez to approve the consent calendar. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Mayor Santenaz?
Aye. All right, council comments, council reports, Councilmember Morse?
I have nothing.
Okay, Councilmember Sanchez?
Come on, Victor, you got something.
I know, I have something, I just can't remember what it was. What did we do? Oh, man, let's see, what have we done? We've done... Oh, that's right, no, that's not city-related? That's, okay. All right, no, I have nothing then, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, my goodness, wow, all right. Council, Mayor Protem Coops?
I'm with Mr. Sanchez, I...
Councilmember Dutton?
Yeah, well, I was recused for the Mr. Gold agenda item. I was very disappointed in what he was saying. And you guys are on the right track, but I think you should have been a little tougher in schooling him. But, but anyway.
You weren't listening, were you?
Anyway, you guys did a good job.
All right.
Not a great, good job.
Not enough, but good job. All right, thank you.
It was a B minus.
For my council reports, I just want to thank the Bellflower Municipal Association for the wonderful mayor prayer breakfast, it was well-attended. I think the speakers are really good. And then also I want to thank the Suroptimist International of Bellflower for hosting the joint service luncheon. And I also want to report that I just came back from Los Moches, Sinaloa, Mexico, for our Sister City Exchange Program. And I can tell you that it is a wonderful trip. I encourage anyone who might be interested in going to Los Moches in two years. They'll be coming here next year. It's a good, it's a great cultural program. What it is, is you exchange, they come here, we host them. The best part of this is we stay at their homes, they stay in our homes. So you're not staying in a hotel, you're staying in whatever it is. So you're learning the culture, you're learning the people in Mexico. So that was a great program, I really enjoyed it, and they're very hospitable. You will not get hungry nor thirsty out there. Let's put it that way. All right, very good. With that, I'd like to adjourn this meeting to the next regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council at five-thirty PM on Monday, November thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three. This meeting is now adjourned.